Ladies and gentlemen, we ask that you please take your seats. We are about to begin. Once again, we ask that you please take your seats. We're about to begin. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our Masters of Ceremonies from WSB TV Channel 2, anchor George Estes, and host of the Georgia Gang on Fox 5 WAGA TV, Lori Geary.
Hello, everyone. If we can have everybody take your seats. I'm told that this show has to be on time.
Yes, like legally, it has to start at 1 o'clock, or we all go to jail. Just kidding, maybe.
All right, we are ready to get the show on the road. Good afternoon and a Happy New Year, everyone.
It's a very exciting day, a new year, and new elected officials, so let's hear it for everybody. Come on. There we go, that's the energy we need.
You know, this is truly a historic day here in Atlanta.
It really is, and what an honor to show this moment with all of you guys in the state-of-the-art facility, the Georgia State University Convocation Center, and of course, home of the Georgia State Panthers. Yes!
As you all know, we are here today to witness the swearing-in of our municipal court city council, new council president, and the 61st mayor of this great city.
Yes, so today, as we join the mayor in moving Atlanta forward, what better place for us to gather than in the heart of our urban center to continue really what Mayor Dickens calls "our group project." Now, it is our pleasure to introduce the leaders who will take the oath of office today in front of all of you.
We begin this afternoon with judges of the Municipal Court of Atlanta. Please recognize them as they enter the stage. The Honorable Judge Allison Pitts. The Honorable Judge Pierce Hand Seetz. The Honorable Judge Teresa Mann. The Honorable Judge Ardra Bay. The Honorable Judge Christopher Portis. The Honorable Judge Jadanya Baker. The Honorable Judge Tyrone Gundy. The Honorable Judge Crystal Gaines. The Honorable Judge Gary Jackson. And the Honorable Chief Judge Christopher Ward. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Municipal Court of Atlanta.
Okay, so now, let's go ahead and welcome the members of the Atlanta City Council, shall we? Let's do it. First up, District 12, the Honorable Antonia Lewis. And District 11, the Honorable Wayne Martin. And now, District 10, the Honorable Andrea Boone. Is this an inauguration or a football game? What do you think, Lori?
Lot of energy.
Yes, all right, here we go. District 9, the Honorable Dustin Hillis. District 8, the Honorable Mary Norwood. District 7, the Honorable Thomas Worthy. District 6, the Honorable Alex Wong. District 5, the Honorable Liliana Batieri. District 4, the Honorable Jason Dozier. District 3, the Honorable Byron Amos. District 2, the Honorable Kelsey Vaughn. District 1, the Honorable Jason Winston. Post 3, at-large, the Honorable Ashay Collins. Post 2, at-large, the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Post 1, at-large, the Honorable Michael Julian Bond. And the Municipal Clerk of Atlanta, Corinne Lindo. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Atlanta City Council. And now, please welcome our newly-elected president of the Atlanta City Council, the Honorable Marcy Hollier Overstreet.
I'm loving that AB music. Okay, we're gonna get y'all to stand again, because we are gonna welcome the 61st Mayor of Atlanta, the Honorable Andre Dickens.
Okay, so, before we get started, we'd like to recognize some of our elected officials who are here with us today. So please stand when we call your name. Senator Raphael Warnock. Former Mayor's Ambassador Andrew Young. Mayor Bill Campbell. Mayor Shirley Franklin. Mayor Kasim Reed. Representing our late mayors, our former first ladies, Mrs. Valerie Jackson. And Mrs. Sandra Michelle. Also, from our congressional delegation, please welcome Representative Lucy McMath. And also Representative Nakima Williams. And for all of our state and local officials attending, please stand so we can recognize you too. Come on up. Thanks for being here on a very special occasion for our city.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand and remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Atlanta Police Honor Guard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Jocelyn Vicente Ramirez from Benjamin E. May's High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you may be seated. Thank you so much to Ms. Ramirez, an 11th grade honor student at Benjamin E. May's High School for bringing the Pledge of Allegiance to us.
And that beautiful rendition of the National Anthem was brought by Atlanta native and Tony Award-winning actress, Ms. Amber Iman.
Just outstanding, yes. So now, please welcome the Atlanta Municipal Clerk, Corinne Lindo, who will call today's proceedings to order.
Good afternoon, everyone. Pursuant to Atlanta City Charter Section 2-301, the first organizational meeting of the 2026 through 2029 term of the Office of the Atlanta City Council is hereby called to order. Further, pursuant to Charter Section 2-301, Atlanta's 61st Mayor, City Council President, City Council Members, and Municipal Court Judges will be sworn in at today's meeting. Council President and Members of Council, please acknowledge your attendance as I sound your name. Council President Marcy Hollier Overstreet. Council Member Michael Julian Bond, Post 1 at Large. Matthew Westmoreland, Post 2 at Large. Council Member Ashay Collins, Post 3 at Large. Council Member Jason H. Winston, District 1. Council Member Kelsey Vaughn, District 2. Council Member Byron D. Amos, District 3. Council Member Jason Dozier, District 4. Council Member Liliana Batieri, District 5. Council Member Alexandra Wong, District 6. Council Member Thomas Worthy, District 7. Council Member Mary Norwood, District 8. Council Member Dustin Hillis, District 9. Council Member Andrea El Boone, District 10. Council Member Wayne Martin, District 11. Council Member Antonia Lewis, District 12. Everyone, we have a coroner present, thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Now, for a little bit about where we are gathered today. You know, Georgia State University has been doing incredible things for our city since its beginning. Believe it or not, this university began in 1913 as the Evening School of Commerce. The mission was to offer commerce education to working people in Atlanta's business district with classes held in rented downtown spaces. Now, 113 years later, this university has seven campuses across metro Atlanta. It serves more than 50,000 students, and offers more than 300 degree programs. Today, we are thankful that Georgia State has so graciously agreed to host this special day in our city's history. It is now my pleasure to welcome the 8th President of Georgia State University, Dr. M. Brian Blake, to give us a great Georgia State University welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. I tell you what, you make this place look really good, so make sure to come back. It's truly an honor to be here today for the swearing-in of our Atlanta's 61st Mayor, Andre Dickens. In addition, congratulations to our City Council President, Marcy Overstreet, and our newest members of the Atlanta City Council and the Atlanta Municipal Court. Mayor Dickens, on behalf of the entire Georgia State University Panther community, and your topmost alma mater, we extend our heartfelt congratulations on your reelection. And now, let me ask, how many, by sheer hands, Georgia State of students, alum, faculty? That's like what I like to hear. Mayor Dickens, clearly you have the full support of your university family, and we all congratulate you. You may remember that just four years ago, Mayor Dickens actually spoke on my swearing-in here, so it's just an honor and a privilege to be able to return the favor. Especially meaningful to host this occasion here at Georgia State University's Convocation Center. This beautiful 8,000-seat facility was opened in September 2022. Since that time, we've hosted 15 GSU convocations and commencements, multiple presidential rallies, Governor Kemp's swearing-in, the state of Georgia's valedictorian events, commencements for many of our metro Atlanta high schools, concerts, and large civic engagements. And of course, every now and then, we play a little Panther baseball in here, so if you want to attend, please come back to send me a message asking your ticket. As many here know, GSU is one of the largest and most diverse highly-research-active universities in the country. We're internationally known for artwork and student success. We proudly graduate the most black students of any institution in the United States. By some measures, more black students than any institution in the world. Time and time again, GSU has demonstrated that students from all backgrounds can succeed. And on behalf of our Chancellor, Dr. Sunny Perdue, my fellow university presidents, I invite you to consider enrolling in any of our 26 outstanding institutions, but especially Georgia State University, which proudly serves the largest number of Georgians in Atlanta. As you've heard introduction, today's Georgia State University is more, and I think it said 50,000, we're actually more than 53,000 students, and over 8,000 faculty and staff, $3.2 billion in annual economic impact, seven campuses, nearly 800 acres, and 15 million square feet of facilities. So we're a pretty big place these days. But being Atlanta's university, and the one of the city's largest landowners, partnership with the Dickens Administration has been essential to our progress over the last four years. Mayor Dickens, your commitment to young people, your Year of the Youth feels more like a decade of the youth, has strengthened our ability to recruit, retain, and inspire students across Atlanta. Your focus on affordable housing means our staff can live closer to campus and can even better serve our students. Your leadership in public safety has made downtown Atlanta safer for our campus community than ever before. And your work on homelessness and green space initiatives in the partnership with GSU ensures a more inclusive and vibrant city for residents and students alike. Mayor Dickens, members of our City Council, our Municipal Court, thank you for your leadership and your partnership, your dedication to Atlanta. Congratulations once again on your reelection. We look forward to many, many more years of collaborations, and I wish everyone here a wonderful occasion, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Blake, appreciate that, and thank you to the entire Georgia State family for welcoming us here today. Big round of applause for them, yes, thank you very much. So now it's time for the invocation. Please welcome the Pastor of New Horizon Baptist Church and Mayor Dickens' pastor, Reverend Sean Smith, to bring on the invocation.
Join me in prayer. Almighty and ever-wise God, we begin with thank you.
we begin with thank you. Thank you for the last four years and all that you have done. We thank you for those next four years to continue what you started. Thank you for your constant presence, even in the midst of turmoil and uncertainty. With a faithful eye, we still see your guiding hand. So we pause in this sacred civic moment to acknowledge that you are the source of all authority, the giver of wisdom and the keeper of this city we love called Atlanta. We thank you for the privilege of gathering at the dawn of a new season and a continuation of leadership, and we lift before you this mayor, the City Council President, and all entrusted with the care of this great city. Lord, your word reminds us that David slew the lion in the bear, not for personal glory, but to protect the sheep. So today, we pray for the courage, strength, and discernment of a shepherd's heart. Grant this administration the resolve to confront and overcome the line of food insecurity and the bear of housing insecurity. Adown them with wisdom and moral clarity to eradicate the scourge of violent crime and to relieve the siege of unaffordability that weighs upon too many of our neighbors. Make this leadership an instrument appealing in a time of division where communities are fractured, so understanding, where cynicism has taken root. Restore hope. Teach us all how to recommit to the group project of building an Atlanta where everyone can live, thrive, and flourish, regardless of zip code. So by your spirit, show this administration what love looks like in civic affairs as they pursue one safe city, a city of opportunity for all, a city built for the future and an effective and ethical government. Remind us that none of this is possible without you and without one another. Teach us to walk together in agreement, to seek unity without demanding uniformity, and to disagree agreeably, always remembering our sacred charge to care for the people. And when we are asked, "How are the children?", may we one day answer together with truth and confidence, "All the children are well." In your holy and sovereign name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Smith. So now, please help me welcome the Honorable Earl Glanville, Chief Judge of the Fulton Superior Court, to administer the oath of office to the judges of the Municipal Court of Atlanta. Come on up, Judge Glanville.
All right, if I could get all our judges to stand. You raise your right hands, please. All right, I'm going to say "Aye", and then you state your name, and then we'll take it from there, okay? It's only tricky part. "Aye", state your name.
Aye, Gary Jackson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will administer justice without respect to person and do equal rights to the poor and the rich. And I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as judge of the Municipal Court of Atlanta according to the best of my ability and understanding and agreeably to the laws and Constitution of the United States and of the state of Georgia and the charter and ordinances of the City of Atlanta. And that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations.
Well done. They were very clear up the stage here. You heard them all. So thank you, Judge Glanville. And now, please welcome the Honorable Christopher Ward, Chief Judge of Municipal Court, to bring us a few words today.
Good afternoon, Atlanta. I am Christopher Ward, and I have the honor of serving as Chief Judge of the Municipal Court of Atlanta. On behalf of our 10 dedicated judges, I want to thank you for entrusting us with the privilege of serving the citizens of Atlanta. The Municipal Court is the largest court of any type in the southeast region, but despite our volume, we remain focused on our core mission to provide a neutral, efficient, and responsive forum for resolving legal matters while preserving the rule of law and ensuring due process for all. We will continue to work with city leadership, community partners, and key stakeholders to deliver the fairness, justice, and excellence in the effective and efficient adjudication of cases that our citizens deserve. We extend our heartfelt congratulations to our 61st Mayor of the City of Atlanta, Andre Dickens. And we also extend congratulations to our new President of the City Council, Marcy Collier Overstreet. Congratulations to all members of the Atlanta City Council, and we look forward to working with you all and moving the great city of Atlanta forward. Again, on behalf of the judges of the Municipal Court of Atlanta, thank you for giving this opportunity to continue to serve the aims of justice. Thank you.
Thank you. The Honorable Judge Robert McBurney from the Fulton County Superior Court will come forward now to administer the oath of office to members of the Atlanta City Council. You've been a little busy lately.
It's all good. It is my pleasure and honor to administer the oath to this amazing city council as it embraces the extraordinary events it's going to need to deal with. If you all would rise, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. "Aye". Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member of the City of Atlanta. I will not knowingly permit -- look at you guys, too. -- my vote to be influenced by fear, favor, affection, and reward. And in all things pertaining to my office, I will be governed by the public good and the interests of the city. I will observe the provisions of the charter as well as the ordinances and regulations of the City of Atlanta. And I will support and defend the constitutions of the United States and the state of Georgia. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you to Judge McBurney. Congratulations to all the members of the City Council. Now, please welcome the Honorable Judge Penny Brown Reynolds, former state court judge, to administer the oath of office to City Council President-elect Overstreet. Joining the Council President as she takes her oath are her husband, Dr. Alfonso Overstreet, and her children, sons Brent and Zo and daughter Elle.
It's indeed an honor for me to administer this oath to an extraordinary public servant. And now, prepare to take the oath of office to step into your destiny, your purpose, and your service. "Aye" and repeat your name.
"Aye", Marcy Collier Overstreet.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of Council
The duties of President of Council.
of the City of Atlanta, Georgia.
Of the City of Atlanta, Georgia.
I will not knowingly permit
I will not knowingly permit
my vote to be influenced
My vote to be influenced.
by fear
By fear.
favor
Favor.
affection
Affection.
or reward
Or reward.
and in all things
And in all things.
pertaining to my office
Pertaining to my office.
I will be governed by the public good
I will be governed by the public good.
and the interests of the city
And the interests of the city.
I will observe
I will observe.
the provisions of the charter
The provisions of the charter.
ordinances
Ordinances.
and regulations
And regulations.
of the City of Atlanta.
Of the City of Atlanta.
And I will support
And I will support.
and defend
And defend.
the Constitution
The Constitution.
of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
and of the state of Georgia
And of the state of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You are officially sworn in by [inaudible].
We'll just let them get back seated.
To the mayor of our incredible city, city leaders, my council colleagues, invited guests, friends, and my family, I'm honored to join you today surrounded by neighbors and partners who love this city as deeply as I do. I also want to thank Council President Doug Shipman and Council and Council Members Howard Shook and Amer Feroke. Our city -- that's correct, yes. Our city is better because of your service. I'm grateful to be a child of our great city, Atlanta, Georgia. I attended the first Black elementary school in Atlanta's history, E.A. Ware, on what was then Hunter Street, is now known as Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. I walked the halls the very first day Benjamin Elijah Mays High School was open and graduated in 1983. I also graduated Georgia State University. But Atlanta is not just the place I live. Atlanta captivated my heart. Atlanta is home. I met and married the love of my life and raised -- and we've raised our three wonderful children here. Atlanta is the reason I believe that absolutely anything is possible. Today, our city is growing with more than half a million residents calling Atlanta home who see this as a place of opportunity, culture, and community. Atlanta added more than 64,000 new residents in just last year alone, and the population is at its highest level in history. It's a powerful sign that the people from across the nation and the world believe that Atlanta's built on a great future. Inside City Hall, we are matching that energy with action. We recently passed a unanimous $3 billion fiscal year 2026 operating budget with a record-high $970 million general fund and solid reserves that will protect our future. Those numbers aren't just lines on the page. They represent our priorities, our values, and our commitment to serve every corner of this city. When I campaigned across Atlanta last year, citizens told me I work nine to five. I can't attend meetings in the middle of a workday on a Monday. I want you to know that I heard you. That's why I plan to institute presidential town halls across the city throughout the year. I will invite the city's lead -- town halls will be back. I will invite the city's leadership to join me so that you can interact with Atlanta's decision-makers. You won't have to wonder what's happening at City Hall. City Hall will come to you because your voices matter, your time matters, and the perspectives of each of you, they matter. As your next council president, I will leave with one question in mind. Will my decisions benefit Atlanta's residents? Every policy, every budget, every project should be able to stand before this question and pass the test. We are fortunate enough to have an extraordinary leader in Andre Dickens, our mayor. He cares about each and every resident in this city. He honors the past while focusing on the future. I'm excited about joining him and advancing a shared vision of a more equitable, more connected, and more resilient Atlanta. Every member of this city council has something powerful to offer. As council president of this great city, I will ensure that every member of council can bring their passion, expertise, and heart to their committee assignments. I have full confidence that they are up to the task and look forward to working with each and every one of you. Now, let's take a moment to imagine the future of the city. What does that look like? If money were not an issue, what could we improve upon? How would we better serve our citizens of Atlanta? I want every resident to know your imagination and your dreams for this city will be heard. They are part of the blueprint of our future. Mayor Dickens started calling Atlanta Mayor Dickens started calling Atlanta a group project, everyone knows this, because no one can do this alone. It takes all of us. And know that we are focused on initiatives that serve our most vulnerable, our seniors who built this city, and our children who will inherit it. I want to build upon the mayor's vision and help elevate their quality of life on every corner in every neighborhood through policies that deliver real measurable impact. I can see in Atlanta where sidewalks make it safe for seniors to move about freely, and children can ride their bikes to school and connect us to our community assets like our beautiful green spaces. I see grocery stores conveniently located and accessible to all, and a transportation grid that lets you get from Campbellton to Peachtree to the Clifton Corridor without a struggle. Simply put, Atlanta must work for everyone. Many of you have seen the social media posts that proclaim Atlanta is not a real place. It's a loving playful way of saying there is no place like Atlanta. And I would agree. Sometimes it doesn't feel real. It feels magical. The culture, the entrepreneurial spirit, the incredible talent that lives on every single block. I grew up in the midst of this magic, surrounded by people who told and showed me that I could do absolutely anything. This glorious city gave me a chance while giving me confidence. Whatever your heart feels led to do, you can do it here in Atlanta, in our great city. I was fortunate enough to become a flight attendant for our own Delta Airlines. I dedicated 20 years, yeah, woo-woo for Delta. I dedicated 20 years before retiring. Then I had the gift of being a stay-at-home mom and before I stepped into public service for the City of Atlanta. Every chapter was made possible by Atlanta. This city inspires you to believe. My vision is clear. Atlanta will continue to be a model city for America. It is a place where aging is embraced and celebrated as strongly as raising a family. It's a place where business, technology, and the arts thrive side by side. Atlanta is where every little boy and girl will grow up knowing that one day they can lead a city too. Everything I do is rooted in love. Love for my community, love for my city, love for a future in which every voice is honored and every life is cherished. I promise to lead this city with compassion, courage, and an unwavering belief in Atlanta's greatness. Thank you for trusting me, Atlanta, to serve as your council president. Let's keep building Atlanta together. Thank you.
Wow. How about that for the Atlanta way? I think Mayor Dickens might have had a little idea there, didn't you? It was his idea, that was awesome. Let's give a huge round of applause for that amazing performance by the Community ATL Choir. This group, started by one woman, has been popping up all over town, entertaining and inspiring Atlanta citizens with their joyful sounds, and those sounds, as you can imagine and guess, have gone viral more than once. Thank you again to Deanna Dixon and the Community ATL Choir for bringing some of that joy to us today. I just have to say, I've been sitting up here on stage and just looking out on these first couple rows, and I think about, I mean, I grew up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, but I've called Atlanta home for almost 30 years, and just what a special place. And it's a special place that so many of you created, and it's not lost on me when we talk about you all and the Georgia Gang, what an honor it is to cover this great city. So I just want to say thank you. And now, the moment we've all been waiting for. The Honorable Asia Jackson, DeKalb County Superior Court Judge, will administer the oath of office. Joining the mayor onstage to hold the Bible is his daughter Bailey Dickens.
Mayor Dickens, it is indeed my honor and privilege, also as a daughter of Atlanta, to be able to swear you into a second term today. You have answered the call, you have risen to the occasion, and now you stand before all of us today to take that charge up 1,000%. And we are so excited for you today. Are you ready?
Yes.
Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Andre Dickens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Mayor of the City of Atlanta, Georgia.
Of the Mayor of the City of Atlanta, Georgia.
I will not knowingly permit my vote.
I will not knowingly permit my vote.
To be influenced by fear.
To be influenced by fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Affection.
Affection.
Or reward.
Or reward.
And in all things.
And in all things.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
I will be governed by the public good.
I will be governed by the public good.
And the interest of the city.
And the interest of the city.
I will observe the provisions.
I will observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the City of Atlanta.
Of the City of Atlanta.
And I will support and defend.
And I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, Atlanta! Happy New Year! Wow. What an exciting and meaningful day in the life of our city. I am deeply humbled to stand before you today as I begin a second term as the Mayor of the City of Atlanta. To the people of this great city, thank you. Thank you for placing your trust in me for the past 12 years, eight years as a citywide city council member, and four years as mayor. I would not be here at all without you. And thank you for sending me back to work with more than 85% of the vote in November. Special thanks to our hosts, Georgia State University, my grad school alma mater and President Brian Blake for welcoming us and hosting this beautiful ceremony here at Georgia State. Let's give them a round of applause and thank them for allowing us to be here. And yes, it is good to be indoors today. I don't know if you remember, but four years ago, in the middle of the global pandemic, we gathered outside in 35-degree weather at Georgia Tech's Bobby Dodge Stadium. Now, people say that that was the coolest inauguration in the city's history. I'm just saying, mayors, I know y'all had one, but mine was the coolest. And they might have been right about that. To my predecessors, Mayor Young, Mayor Campbell, Mayor Franklin, Mayor Reed, and Mayor Bottoms, and to the widows of Mayor Michelle and Mayor Jackson, thank you for being here today, for giving me shoulders that were broad enough to stand on. Thank these leaders for what they've done. It's also important for this group project. To our municipal court judges, thank you for your service and your commitment to justice. And to all the elected and appointed officials that are out in the audience that are here today, state, local, and even the Consular Corps of International Leaders, thank you all for your dedication to the people that you serve. Let's give a round of applause to all of the elected and appointed figures that are here today, and to our great municipal court. And to the world's greatest city council, congratulations on the start of a new term, and thank you for your sacrifices and your partnership. I look forward to working together with you all for another four years. Thank you, let's give it up for the world's greatest city council. Thank you. And to the faith leaders and community leaders, business and labor leaders, educators, and our seniors, hundreds of seniors are here today. That's right. I love my seniors, they rowdy in Atlanta, they, they, they. We're gonna have a senior ball soon, I think. Thank you. Thank you for all that you have done for this city, for Atlanta's group project. To my mother, my sister, and my daughter that are all here with me today, thank you for your unconditional love and support. Thank you. And as a point of personal privilege, I'd like to say on this January 5th, happy anniversary to all my brothers of Calpa Alpha Sound Fraternity Incorporated. Yo, yo! Most of you know what that's about. If you didn't know, Google it, you'll find out. January 5th is very special to my fraternity. To all of my friends and family and extended family, you have stood with me through the highs and the lows, and you have sacrificed alongside me on this journey. You, you are my foundation. And above all, Reverend Smith, I thank God for the strength, for the guidance, and the grace to meet each day as it comes. I truly feel blessed. And I see my church family, New Horizon up there. That's right, New Horizon, let them know, we, we small but mighty. As a 16-year-old boy, I set my sights on a dream. To serve the city that raised me, a city shaped by giants, Mayor Maynard Jackson, Ambassador Andrew Young, Congressman John Lewis, and none other than Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. this city, so special. Today, I am honored to continue that calling for four more years. From the bottom of my heart, everyone, I say thank you. Thank you again. Four years ago, Atlanta faced a test unlike any that we had seen before. The questions were heavy. How would we recover from a global pandemic? Could we keep our city whole? How would we remove violence from our streets? Could we ensure an affordable place to call home for every Atlantian? How would we care for those struggling to make ends meet? These were not individual questions, they were collective ones, because Atlanta is and always will be a group project. At a moment when the federal government has pulled back from that group project, Atlanta chooses not to retreat. I appreciate the work of our federal congressional delegation, and I want to recognize Senator Warnock, Congresswoman Williams, and McBatt for joining us today and joining us each day in the fight. We are all choosing to lean in. We are choosing to remain indivisible. The pledge of allegiance that we recited earlier today says, "Indivisible with liberty and justice for all." Atlanta, we are indivisible, committed to one city, to one future, and most importantly, committed to one another. And this second term is about finishing that group project by investing where Atlanta has always drawn its strength. When you first elected me mayor, I promised that I would set the vision, remove the barriers, deliver the resources, and work from can't see morning to can't see night. And today, I am proud of how this city responded. My pastor, Reverend Smith, once told me that love ought to look like something. Love just ought to look like something. My love looks like all the love and energy that we gave into this city over the last four years that led to some truly awesome results. And I want to thank my cabinet members and over 9,000 women and men who work for the City of Atlanta for their exemplary service. Let's give these dedicated public servants a round of applause. Together with the help of the Atlanta City Council, we have invested in people and neighborhoods we have invested in people and neighborhoods at a historic scale. We opened 500 rapid rehousing units to address homelessness and started or completed more than 13,000 units of affordable housing in just four years. Through our Year of the Youth, we invested over $40 million in young people from early childhood education and mentorship to after-school programming and college scholarships. But we didn't stop there. We hired more than 19,000 young people and paid every single one of them a living wage. And the results speak clearly. We kept our city whole, successfully fighting off the Buckhead City movement. Because of our collective efforts, Atlanta remains one city with one bright future. We strengthened public safety through smart policing and addressing the root causes of crime. As a result, Atlanta has experienced one of the largest drops in violent crime in the nation for the first time in years. For the first time in years, we finished 2025 with fewer than 100 homicides in the City of Atlanta. And while youth-related crime decreased by 56% through programs like midnight basketball, Atlanta Public Schools achieved the highest graduation rate in the city's history. Give it up for APS, y'all. I went to APS. My mama went to APS. My sister went to APS. My daughter went to APS. Your council president went to APS. Maze High. Give it up for APS. Love it. We expanded access to parks, expanded the Belt Line, and connected the city to the Chattahoochee River, reclaiming public space for public good. We invested in small businesses, reduced food deserts, built the city's first municipal grocery store, created an Atlanta Department of Labor, and raised the city's minimum wage to $17.50 an hour. And for the first time in our city's history, Atlanta earned a AAA bond rating. Perfect credit for the ATM. Atlanta has been named the best city in the nation to live, the best city to start a business, the best city to start a career, and the most educated city in America. Across every measure, the phoenix of Atlanta continues to rise. But I am not, I'm not satisfied. How can we be satisfied when too many of our neighbors still sleep on our streets? How could we be satisfied when poverty and inequality continue to divide our city? How can we be satisfied when too many families live check to check, often finding themselves with more munk than they have money? These answers are yet to be written. And to write them, we must be honest about who we are and where we are from. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. reminded us that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. Right now, in this city, where a child is born still determines how long he or she will live. This is unacceptable. And Atlanta's future hinges on how we confront that truth. As a young man growing up in the church, I identify with the story of David. And although he becomes king, David's leadership does not begin in a palace. It begins in the field, formed by responsibility and perseverance long before recognition ever comes. Atlanta knows that story because David's leadership truly began in the neighborhood. Neighborhoods like mine, like Addlesville, where opportunity was scarce, but resilience was abundant. Places that were underestimated, places asked to endure more with less. And yet, time and again, they have produced strong leadership and possibility. That is why the defining work of this next term is the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative, an effort to ensure that every neighborhood in Atlanta is safe, connected, healthy, and whole. Many of our neighborhoods have been underserved and disinvested without access to food, amenities, jobs, and strong educational opportunities. And as a result, some of them are mostly impacted by violence. Poverty and inequality are our persistent enemies. They are Atlanta's Goliath. And as we all remember from Sunday School, when David faced Goliath, he didn't bring an army. He brought five smooth stones. Atlanta's five stones in this fight are affordable housing, investing in neighborhoods, opportunities for our youth, keeping residents and visitors safe and all while prioritizing ethics, financial stewardship, and good government. Those are our five stones. And everywhere we've thrown those stones, the results have been undeniable. Across public safety and academic achievement, providing access to transit and job opportunities, promoting healthy foods and green space. Every investment has paid outsized dividends, not just for those immediately impacted, but for the entire city. The group project is working. And so we are no longer guessing. We're not debating whether this approach works. We have seen the results with our own eyes, and we're ready to face Goliath head on. Which brings us back to the biblical story. David does not negotiate with Goliath. He does not manage him. He does not accept him as inevitable. He defeats him. And like David, Atlanta has never backed down from hard work. In our Atlanta, we are done with managing poverty. We are done with tolerating inequality. We are done with accepting violence as destiny. These forces are not permanent. They are not unbeatable, and they do not get the final word. When we invest in people, families, neighborhoods, we don't just reduce the harm, we dismantle the conditions that cause the harm to exist in the first place. This is how Atlanta defeats its giants. That is how the group project will continue to deliver. Everything we've achieved and everything we've accomplished moves us toward a shared, long-term vision that Atlanta will be the best place to thrive and raise a child. That is not just a slogan. It is our promise. Every investment in youth, safety, and neighborhoods is a step towards a city where every child has opportunity, every family can prosper, and every community is whole. And together, as one indivisible community, we will close the book on a tale of two cities and build a brighter future for all Atlanta. Let's continue to move Atlanta forward together. God bless you. God bless this city. Now let's get to work, Atlanta.
Ladies and gentlemen, the 61st mayor of the City of Atlanta, the Honorable Andre Dickens.
Yes, we had to wait for the boxes to come on stage so we could stand here at the podium at the appropriate Dickens height. Boxes are here so we can commence. Thank you, Mayor Dickens. And as you step into the second term, the entire city is taking those steps with you. Your leadership, your leadership, especially at this time in our nation's history, is pivotal to our city's success. And we know that your success is our success. So we will be standing with you as we move Atlanta forward together. So congratulations and the very best to you and to the council.
This has really, truly been just a beautiful afternoon. And how wonderful it has been to be a witness to a part of Atlanta's history. As we prepare to close, please welcome Reverend Eric Thomas, pastor of St. Peter Missionary Baptist Church, to the podium to bring the benediction.
Let us pray. Most holy and wise God, our Father, we come in this moment, this sacred moment, Lord, that you ordained in times past, that you bring to happen today. We say thank you. We say thank you, Lord, for your sovereignty, your power, your omniscience, your omnipotence, and your omnipresence. But Lord, today we say thank you for this mayor that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for his commitment, and we thank you, Lord, for planting him here this season to do the great work you've called him to do. Lord, we thank you for our city council president, who you've grown up in this city. You've developed her for this time. And we pray, God, that you grant her your strength to continue to do the work you've called her to do. We thank you, Lord, for each member of the city council. We thank you, Lord, for each of the municipal judges. And we pray, God, now, that each of the promises that have been made by your power come to pass. We thank you, Lord, and ask that this vision that has been shared, that in this moment, it will begin the process of being made manifest. We thank you, Lord, and praise you and ask right now that every idea that's been shared will come to pass during this season. And now, Lord, as we leave this place, after all the declarations have been made, after all the oaths have been taken, we pray, God, now that you empower these of your people to do the work you've called them to do. We pray, God, that you give them the strength to serve you from can't see morning to can't see evening. We pray, God, that you give them the wisdom to lead the way that you've called them to lead. And we pray, God, four years from now, when we come back together, that this city will be a better city, even better than it is right now. And we pray, God, that we will be a shining light for all the world to know what can be done in the City of Atlanta. We pray, God, for each member of the mayor's team. And we pray, God, for all those who make up the city staff, all of the employees. And we pray, God, for all of the city that we work together to do the great work that you've laid before us. Now, to him that is able to keep us from falling, we come to you today saying thank you. And we ask, God, as we leave this place, that you grant us, Lord, all that you have called us to do. And you grant us all the grace and mercy and give it to us that we may be able to live in this city in the peace and the joy that you prescribe for us. Now, to him that is able to do exceedingly more, we ask a thing. We say together three times, amen. Amen. Amen.
Okay, and now, as your first official duty as city council president, Marcy Collier Overstreet, please come forward to adjourn the Atlanta City Council meeting.
As presiding officer of the Atlanta City Council, I hereby request a motion to recess this first organizational meeting of 2026. Councilmember Boone moved. Who's the second? Councilmember Lewis is second. Would all members of Atlanta City Council who are in favor of this motion please signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Say nay. The motion carries. The meeting for the Atlanta City Council is now in recess. Thank you.
So this concludes the City of Atlanta 2026 inauguration. Thank you all so much for allowing us to be here. It is my honor to be here today. Thank you so much.
Have a great rest of the day and be safe, everyone.
Council. City council, we're getting a photo. Council.
Get all y'all. We're gonna take a group picture. Group picture right here. Stay right there. Stay right there.
Council president. Mayor Andre.
I love you. I gotta get her in the photo.
Mayor Andre.
Councilman Martin. Councilman Martin.